We've got FCP rolling here. Good evening and welcome to the September 23 meeting of the zoning board of appeals here live at Falmouth Town Hall. I will forego the usual announcements. I'll hold off until 6:30 when more people are here to actually listen. But up first for 6 o'clock, we do have a discussion with Mr. Tom Bott, the town planner, updates on the mixed use residential commercial overlay district. So, Mr. Bott?
Mr. Chair members of the board, all of its staff. I'm Tom Bott, I'm the town planner here in Falmouth, Mass. And by invitation, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the mixed use redevelopment overlay district that's being proposed for a town meeting. The shorthand for this is Mr. Cod, but not everyone loves Mr. Cod, so we're trying to stick with mixed residential commercial overlay district. So this was an effort by a subcommittee of the planning board to create a bylaw to essentially create apartments in the town of Falmouth. But you can't zone by ownership. You can't do zoning that says, "We want to build apartments." You have to build multifamily. And the option is that the developer, whether they're going to do homeownership or rental. So in the, in this proposal, this would be an overlay district, wouldn't change the zoning, but in areas where there's B1, B2, and BR zoning, someone could come in with a site plan with the planning board and the design review guidelines and look at creating or perhaps redeveloping a piece of property for multifamily, up to 20 units per acre. Now frankly, we don't expect to see a lot of things up to 20 units per acre, but the idea was to give as much flexibility as they could in order to try to create units. And as you can imagine, on some of the parcels that are in B1, B2, and B3, they aren't very large parcels. So someone has to be particularly creative so that you're not going to be seeing, you know, three-bedroom units and things like that. We anticipate they're going to be smaller units. So that was the genesis of the idea. And the purpose, to help the town get those 10% subsidized housing inventory, to incentivize developers and proprietors to create that sort of housing we talked about. And in order to mitigate for traffic congestion, try to keep those higher density uses in areas that typically have some other sort of services as well. And usually in, well, in some of those areas, they're sewered and others they're not. So you would be able to use the underlying zoning, so like I said, the zoning doesn't change, so whatever's allowed right now in B1, B2, B3, you could do that. Or you can opt for the overlay. And if you opt for the overlay, you're looking at, you know, this, a mixed use, what could be an apartment above could be, you know, offices or commercial or retail below with those units over top of them. So in order to try to incentivize the marketplace for building apartments versus condos, that ownership entity, if you do rental units, then 25% of those rental units would be, need to be affordable. If you want to do a homeownership, then 50% of those units would have to be affordable. So the onus is because we know that the dollars and cents typically involved in an affordable unit aren't, the market doesn't meet those, you typically see more 40Bs, and this is not a 40B, this is a local development. But you typically see more 40Bs as we're seeing right now when the market's hot. Because in order to underwrite the cost of those affordable units, you've got to have a pretty robust market rate in order to underwrite that. So the idea here is if you're going to do rental, then 25% of those units are affordable. If you're going to do ownership, 50% have to be affordable. And there's a one-year minimum for the lease. So as I said, this would be done under the site plan review. So as part of this development, we've actually looked and tweaked the site plan review a bit. So site plan review within the planning board. Presently, under site plan review, notice to a butters goes out and it's only 100 feet. And that's not a whole lot of area. We have 300-foot butters notices for subdivisions, for special permits. So in order to make, in order to give more people a chance to weigh in on this type of developments that be going into these areas, the idea was to expand that a butters notification from 100 feet to 300 feet. So that is in the new bylaw and we're amending the site plan bylaw to create that as well. So in order to do that, you come to site plan for the planning board, butters notice at 300 feet. There's a minimum of four units on a property, a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, and building heights no more than 35 feet and no more than 2.75 stories. Now I know the planning board and the zoning board of appeals have had some previous discussion about how many stories in that top floor. So in this case, they would look at a potential for two and three-quarters stories on that top floor, essentially to create more room for units on that top floor. So parking wise, we want to, and most of us believe in the planning business, that we're a bit overparked as it is. So in this particular scenario, it's required for one parking space per dwelling. And that could be smaller as well if the development had a car sharing program with it. So like a Zipcar. So if you've got a, let's make something up. You've got, you've got 10 units that you're putting on the site. You could put nine parking spaces on it if one of them is a car share. So essentially, people who live in that unit could say, "Yeah, I'm taking the car to the store," or something like that. Do we have a robust car sharing program here in Falmouth? No. But perhaps this might incentivize somebody to say, "Yeah, I'm going to go out and I'm going to get a grant and buy, you know, 10 Chevy Volt's, get some electric charging stations, and then try to create a market here for this type of thing." Because as far as some of the comments we got back from the Falmouth Climate Action Network, from the Energy Committee, they wanted to see a number of things introduced into the zoning that were more energy efficient. And those things tend to be more building code issues. So it's really hard to zone for green based on, you know, buildings and the performance of the building. So we looked at what we're able to do site-wise to deal with that. So this idea of car sharing. So if it's a mixed use development, we've got parking requirements all over the place for non-residential. One per 200, one per 300, one per, so we looked at what's the most, the least intrusive as far as a non-residential use and say, "Okay, if you're going to put some non-residential space on the bottom, one space per 300 square feet and one space per unit for the units that might be in that building, perhaps above it." Setbacks. So there's a maximum front yard setback. We typically deal with minimum front yard setbacks. So a maximum front yard setback basically says the building can't be further than 20 feet off the street. And this has been along the guidelines that the planning board and other folks have been trying to do is create an environment where when you drive down the street, you see houses, you see architecture, you see landscaping, you don't see the bumpers of cars. So this is an attempt to push the parking around behind the side of the building by having that maximum front yard setback. So a building could go right up to the curb, could go back as far as 20 feet, but no further. No minimum setback. Because with a minimum setback, yeah, it could be 20, you could sit back 100 feet and fill the front yard with parking lot. So 10-foot side yard setback, 10-foot rear yard setback. Now these are in business districts, B1, B2, and BR. But if that development abuts residentially zoned property, then there's a larger setback. 20 feet is the setback for those under, if it abuts residential development. So the information that we have for this is on our website. So if you went to the Falmouth Planning Board website, you would find Fall Town Meeting articles, proposed maps for mixed use and residential development. And you click on that, you'll find, let's go up to the top here. So you'll find there the entire text of the bylaw. I'm not going to read it to you because it's, it's a lot of words and not great TV. So in addition to the bylaw, there's also attached the map of the areas that we're looking at for B1, B2, and BR. And they're not all those areas in town. There's this strip that you see along North Falmouth Highway here, and as we come further south, you see a lot more B1 and B2. Now if you just dive a little deeper into the document, we've got detailed maps of all those areas. So here we, there's 10 maps that follow that. So you see what's actually in each of these areas. And we created these maps so you could get an idea when you look at where the B2 is here at the corner. So it's B2, not B3. You can see actually what's on the property right now as far as the building footprints. So these are the B1, B2, and BR areas in North Falmouth. These are, and I'm going to have to put my glasses on to keep reading these things because the letters get smaller and smaller. So this is along Palmer Avenue near Trehun. We've got once again, B2 zoning. Coming down and making the corner onto Main Street, here is Main Street where we've got a combination of B1, B2, and BR zoning. Further out Main Street, heading towards Falmouth Heights, you see this continue on. And this also includes the area for Davis Straits. Now as you likely know, we have been working for a few years since the Cape Cod Commission helped us with this on a form-based code development for Davis Straits. And we'd hope to have that this year as well, but that, we're still working on that. So for the time being, this would apply in the Davis Straits area as well. If we get to that point, and I certainly hope we will, that we adopt form-based code, I hope, that we adopt this, and then we adopt form-based code later on, under form-based code, it wouldn't be an overlay, it would change the zoning. So all those B2 parcels that are currently in the Davis Straits area, their zoning would change from B2 to form-based code, or whatever we're going to call that zoning. So those wouldn't be eligible for this, for the time being. But for the next six months, year, however long that is, someone could imply, employ this proposed zoning in the Davis Straits area as well. Moving on a little further out on T-Ticket Highway, we get here towards the corner of Sandwich and Trotting Park. In addition, further out here on T-Ticket, we've got a couple different two BR, B2 nodes. And then in East Falmouth Highway, you see a few more as we travel along the main drag there. And then we get out closer to East Falmouth and out, closer out to Akoi, where essentially the last B2 is in the Akoi area. There are a couple areas of B2 that weren't included in B1. Amongst those, a couple of parcels that are on Nathan Ellis Highway that are just out in the middle of nowhere. Corner of Sandwich Road and Nathan Ellis as well, there's B2 there recently redeveloped as a Duncan and some other things. And the Woods Hole area was eliminated as well just because of the overall density there and the lack of trying to get anything on, or not the lack of density, but the lack of, the lack of space to put anything other than what's in Woods Hole already. So that is the general concept between, behind the zoning and what's in it. And we've had the hearings on these, we've had probably four hearings on the mixed use residential commercial overlay district. And it's prepared to go to town meeting at this point. And I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bott. Questions from the board, anyone?
Yeah, a couple questions. So you mentioned design guidelines. So is that just a framework they work within or any of those mandates? So, you know, I went to the meetings before with that architectural company and gave us samples of what the plans were. But do they have to stay within those guidelines? What if a developer says, "Thank you for the guidelines, but I'm building this instead?"
Well, guidelines are guidelines, not standards. So in the case of form-based code, those graphic images, those, those development standards would not be guidelines, they would be the zoning. You'd build it to make it look like that. So a guideline directs the person in that direction.
So in this case, because the form-based code isn't, is coming as a secondary, if somebody applied under this before the form-based code is, they, they wouldn't be constrained by what they wanted to build?
They would be constrained by the fact that the planning board has to approve both the site plan and the design guidelines.
So that's my question. So if they, so if somebody decides they don't want to build within the look of the design guidelines, planning board then has the option to say no because it's not within the guidelines?
Correct.
On the rental units or in some of these details in general, who has oversight for compliance? So you mentioned like one-year minimum leases or 25% affordable. Are the affordability standards going to be deed restrictions?
Yes. So all of these, because one of the goals of the bylaw is to increase the number of units on the subsidized housing inventory. And for them to make it to the subsidized housing inventory, the person who rents that unit has to go through that lottery process. You don't get to pick, if you build, you know, four units and one of them's affordable, you don't necessarily get to pick that, that affordable tenant. It has to go through that lottery process. So to get on the subsidized housing inventory, you have to go to that, they have to have the lottery, the fair market.
So you would, so you would then have to put deed restrictions on?
Absolutely. And there's a lot of people who may look at this and say, "I'd much rather pick my own tenant rather than have somebody pull out of a hat."
No, I only ask because when we did the accessory apartment, that was one thing that we lost. We lost the deed restriction and almost immediately, within a matter of months, properties that had deed restricted units all had them removed because they didn't have to comply anymore with the deed restrictions. When you're dealing with something like a minimum one-year lease, even though there's oversight by some of these departments, I didn't think that they kept track of the individual leases. I thought they kept track of the tenant.
Well, the difficulty with affordable, with rental versus ownership is that at ownership, that person qualifies at the closing and then they never have to qualify again. With a rental, that person has to qualify every year. So that is, that is where the monitoring agency comes in. And monitoring has been problematic in affordable housing, you know, throughout Massachusetts. But as that person who gets a lease, they have to qualify for that initial lease through the lottery and have that income requirement. If you happen to get a raise, a new job, or something happens in that year, when you come back and it's time for you to renew your lease and they do that income check, if you're, you know, if you're, if you've priced out that unit, then you're obliged to move out. And the landlord has to say, "I'm sorry, I can't renew your lease because you don't qualify for this affordable unit."
So would the town be supplied with that information also, again, like back to the accessory apartments? It's written in that the building department is actually the one that gets the affidavit, you know, for the yearly leases. It's my understanding that that isn't being followed because they just don't have the manpower, I guess, to handle that in the department. So is there a, another division in the town hall, so just there's a double check? And again, I ask because we are a summer community. So it is very common for units like this to be sublet. Tenants can make much more money if they're able to sublet. You're dealing with Airbnbs, VRBOs. I know you mentioned that the, you know, one parking space per dwelling unit, which in most cases seems like it may be fine for rentals. I can tell you in a homeownership situation, just from my background, that one parking space per homeownership has always been a problem down here unless we had guest parking available somewhere. And we've seen it when we've even done subdivisions. I know some of the information that has been out with editorials and things has been that by allowing this kind of an overlay district, they seem to give the impression that this will cut down on 40B development. So I guess my question to you on that would be, how would this have a direct effect on a developer wanting to do a 40B project in some of these other areas, you know, versus dealing with something in the downtown?
The cumulative effect of trying to redevelop the type of parcels that are in B1 and B2 are likely not to have a significant impact to provide a safe harbor. You get safe harbor under 40B when you create X number of units in a year, or you get to that 10% number. And you get to that 10% number by having larger scale developments, by having larger parcels and things like that. What we anticipate here is we would add to the subsidized housing inventory, but I don't know that anybody I've talked to anticipates that this is some sort of magic bullet that's going to say, "Oh, this is going to stop 40Bs." It's going to add to the subsidized housing inventory. And more importantly, and what I tell people on a pretty regular basis, our goal shouldn't be to try to get to 10%. It's a laudable goal, but that goal changes each time the census comes out and there's a new count for development units, for how many housing units there are. Our goal should be to try to create as many affordable units as we can, as quickly as we can because of the need. Now people are ingenious, they're industrious, and this is maybe shocking, but some people will cheat. And it's conceivable that somebody go, "Yeah, I got this thing and I'm, it's, I'm going to, I'm going to do what I'm going to do with it." But monitoring is that thing that is always in play, and it's always the thing that's most problematic in affordable units throughout Massachusetts.
Now where this is being permitted by the planning board, does that mean that a butters still would have the appeal capacity?
That is why site plan is different from special permits. So as a site plan, you don't appeal a site plan, you can appeal the building permit that is issued from the site plan.
So at this higher density then, a butters would not have the ability to appeal?
At this higher density, a butters would have the ability to appeal a building permit that was issued as a product of the site plan. Now the problem is, is that when someone gets a special permit, you know when that's filed. It goes to the, to the, to the town clerk's office, and there's an appeal period for X number of days from the date of that decision. The difficulty of someone trying to appeal a building permit is you don't know when that building permit's been issued unless you sort of ask the building department to notify you if a building has been issued on this, and I don't know what their, their typical business is. But a person has the ability to appeal that building permit, there's a window for it, you just don't know when that window opens as quickly as you would for a special permit.
And then just one more question. You mentioned that the maximum, you're going to set a maximum setback, which is 20 feet versus a minimum, there'd be no minimum. Does that mean that buildings could be built directly on sidewalks?
Put a building on, it could look like something right across the street here. And there are a number of buildings built on the sidewalk, right across the street with the parking in the back.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Good question. I think this is going in front of one board and done, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, another thing that's a little bit off subject is when you go back to your recodification, look at the number of seats required for the years for the ZBA. You still have five years in recodification. It should be three years. I can send you the site.
That'd be great.
No other question?
Thanks, Jerry. Anyone else?
Mr. Bott, you mentioned that there's no magic answer in terms of, you know, achieving the 10% in terms of affordable housing, but was there any sort of analysis done or any sort of study how much affordable housing is anticipated per year?
No.
If we institute this?
No.
All right. Anyone? Last chance?
Oh, one last chance and it may be, because I'm assuming town meeting may not know the difference between B1, B2, and BR. You might have a fact sheet or something that just highlights it so they don't get confused.
So, so two things. One of the things we like to do for folks at town meeting, and I know you're a town meeting member, you've probably gotten some of my emails, they're fascinating, people love them. They say, "Please send us more." But we typically send town meeting members an email that says, "We had a hearing, you're invited to come. You missed the hearing, here's what we talked about." And then just prior to town meeting, we send them a third email that says, "Here are the dates that the planning board had these hearings, here's the discussions that we had, here are the times during that meeting, you can go 28 minutes into the meeting and find out about Article 4." So folks from town meeting can go to the planning board hearings that they never went to by sitting in the comfort of their home and clicking on the links and going and looking at this information. So we try to provide that information for folks prior to town meeting. The interesting thing about this type of zoning, because it's housing, the changes to the state law under the Housing Choice Initiative is that a vote to change zoning for housing is not 2/3, it's 50% plus one. So when we have zoning for housing, it's 50% plus one. One of the things that we're proposing to change, that 300-foot buffer, the 300-foot of butters notice in site plan, when we take that very simple thing, the town meeting, to change this 100-foot to 300 feet for site plan review, that requires a 2/3 vote because it's not housing related. But housing things are 50% plus one. When we get to recodification, and by the way, thanks for giving us the plug, Jerry, there is a hearing for recodification on Tuesday. Recodification's going to require 2/3 vote because it's all the zoning. So as we move forward, some things housing related will be a 50% plus one, and just about everything else will remain that 2/3 majority vote.
Now you can answer my question, Jerry?
What was your question?
Just a suggestion that you put the definition of B1, B2 for the town meeting members to know. I imagine I couldn't tell off the top of my head what the difference is between a B1 and a B2.
How?
You know, it's just, you know, if they happen to live next, next to one. Maybe they should look it up beforehand. I will try to, but that's, you know.
Well, you're a, you're a very good everyman, Jerry. If something confuses you, it may confuse somebody else, and I will do my best to help them out.
Thank you. I think.
(laughing)
I think I spent that in a great, in a, in a very constructive way.
How many of these districts are bordering residential districts?
Well, I would venture to say just about every one. I think most places you see, I mean, we can go back through the slides here. Here's, here's B2 in Akoi. We've got AG here and R on the bottom. Here we are on T-Ticket Highway, we got RC residential, and we've got AG over here.
So if, so if one, if this was passed and went into effect and you had the planning meeting and there's an approval, and a butter in a residential district wanted to appeal, again, it could only be the building permit. What actually could they appeal with the building permit? They couldn't appeal the design, the density. So what actually could they appeal? And I, my only question is, when we do 40Bs, I know it's the word no one wants to hear, all that we hear from is a butters. And all the butters want to have the right to appeal if they have, or want to have certain items placed in, maybe buffering or something in the projects. And we've, we've dealt with cases before where just a building permit is appealed versus a project. And I guess my only concern is, and I know that a lot of this works out well, it seems like an butter to this project, if there was something that affected them directly, even though they may now be on the 300-foot of butters list, doesn't really have any teeth to appeal something. Because if the plan and the style and the layout is approved, you can't really appeal that. And I don't know what else you could appeal with the building permit. I mean, if the building permit would be allowed, it would be as, by right with planning board approval.
Yeah, I frankly have to tell you, I don't have a whole lot of experience with appeals for building permits, so I really don't have a good answer for you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Mr. Bott, thank you for your time tonight.
Great. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you soon.
6:27. The rest of our agenda doesn't start till 6:30. Oh. Take a three-minute break and get back at it.
From engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Alder Lane and Red Bud Lane are private rights of way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project is not directing any stormwater runoff to public property of Butters or public rights of way. We recommend the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells or stormwater infiltration measure for the new roof area at a minimum. Where this project falls in the jurisdiction of CONCOM, we recommend deferring to Conservation Commission for Stormwater Management and Construction Erosion Controls. From Cathay with the Water Department, the water main and service must be on the plans. The existing home has a one-inch service fed from an eight-inch main in Red Bud Lane. The proposed renovation cannot be built over the existing water service. And the water meter will have to be installed inside the home, if not inside currently. Assessors have no comment, planning no comment. Fire Department has no issues with the project as drawn. There was a determination by the Building Commissioner changing the the front yard designation to Alder Lane and not Red Bud. So Red Bud will become a side yard and that way it will be in compliance with setback requirements to Red Bud Lane. And there's no, no comments from Butters.
All right, and for this application, we'll be appointing Scott and Jerry as voting members. That way we have a full board. Feel free to go right ahead.
All right, so, good evening, my name is Shannon Sylvester. My role at Clancy Construction is the Client Relations and Permit Liaison. I'm here to represent our clients, Brian and Elaine Green of 71 Alder Lane in North Falmouth. Up on the screen is the site plan that we submitted to show the proposed and existing. We are here to request your approval to tear down the existing two-car garage and replace it with this, in the same location with a three-car garage with habitable space above. The space above will only be used strictly for storage and seasonal craft projects. Bear with me just a second. So here in line is the plan. This is the existing structure. This is the elevations.
So did you say the, the, the space above is only being used for storage?
Correct.
I guess for some reason I thought it was a master bedroom or more.
Nope, nope, it's strictly for storage and craft space. As you can see, it's a one, a single floor currently off to the side. This is the backside of the house image. And the expansion would be to add the third bay in the front side of the house? If I'm seeing that properly? Yes, front side of the house toward Red Bud, Red Bud. And then adding a dormer facing the front corner. So as you'll see in the pictures, I can point it out for you.
If you go back one.
Yep. No worries. Here, right in this area up here, above the garage doors, there'll be a dormer facing their driveway, facing Red Bud. I have also gone, so you have more of a visual of the actual neighborhood. I went and took some pictures of the front of the house. And as you can see, that the driveway there is behind the Alder Lane sign to the, facing the house, to the left-hand side. And this is standing at Red Bud currently. It does have the two-car garage with a single door. We will be expanding the driveway on the left-hand side a smidge. I'm learning a thing or two by these, I'm gonna make a PowerPoint next time. And as you can see where the marker is, that's probably a little before that is where we'll extend the driveway to allow for the turn into the, into the garage. We'll also be removing the back deck and relocating the outdoor shower and putting in a smaller stone patio. One thing I did want to mention is that with the special permit and why we're requesting it is because the lot size is at 17,542 square feet. And we are aware that to have the third garage, you need to be at 30,000 square feet on the plot. But with, with the approval of a special permit, we'll also be removing a non-conformity and bringing the house into conformity by a point seventeen percent with the new changes. As well as with the deck and relocating the outdoor shower where we will be able to stay within the twenty percent lot coverage. That also being said, the Greens and Wild Harbor Estates have an agreement to remedy a couple of the encroachments, which they have both signed off on. So we will be able to take care of those encroachments as well.
Do you have copies of that at all for the file?
I do have copies, yes.
If you, before you leave, if you have one you could submit, just so I could.
Yep, absolutely. Just one copy for.
It's just for the file, so.
Okay, yeah, I can send them over tomorrow morning.
Anything else in terms of the presentation? We'll turn it to board questions if we.
Yeah, I'm open for questions.
Sounds good.
Can I ask a quick administrative question? So, so we don't have anything in here from Board of Health?
Not if you don't have anything shown there in the front.
So, does the space above the garage meet any definition for habitable space?
You mean, is it a bedroom?
Well, we just, I, I very rarely. Well, very rarely do we not have a referral from Health.
Can I just add one more thing? I just, I forgot to mention that this won't have a bathroom, it won't have closets, it won't have any bedrooms of any sort.
Is there heat up there at all?
There will be heating, electric, and cooling.
What's the, is it regular ceilings?
Mm-hmm.
And there's a window?
Yeah, it'll be in the dormer.
So, so it's gonna meet the definition of a bedroom? Just so the board knows, we may have to get information from the Board of Health.
Yeah, well, let's see how board questions go and then we might be able to circle back on that. Jerry, you got anything?
No questions, other than what Bob already brought up.
Sure, James?
In terms of the heat, that's just gonna be baseboard electric? And not getting plumbing run up to the, the second floor?
Just for the heating and cooling. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I can circle back and find, give you the answer to that. I'm not sure if it's gonna be gas or if it'll be electric, I have to confirm.
I'm sure it was a descriptive slip of the tongue, that's a rent station, correct, not an outdoor shower?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Rent station, sorry.
Print that on your phone.
Anything else, James?
Um, nope.
All right, Bob, I know you had that one question.
Yeah, so I don't have any general questions, just, so just for the board in general. So, again, we don't have the Board of Health referral. We'll need one in this case. And we probably should have anything coming from the association, just so we know if the association had an issue, what was taken care of. I guess my only question would be, do you know, is, is there currently a water line, where the water line's gonna be?
The water line currently comes in from Red Bud, but we would have that relocated so that way.
So you just move it on the site?
Yeah, exactly, it'll stay where it's at, we're just gonna move it over.
A letter from the association should be in the file.
If not, I have a copy of it I can give you.
See, I thought I saw that one earlier this week.
No, you probably did, you just, I don't have my glasses. Oh, here it is, so let me just read it really quick so we know. So, this is to the owners from the association. References made to your garage addition to be built at 71 Alder Lane set forth in the site plan by BSS Design dated June 7, 2021. And the design plans for Tumi Design dated May 4, 2021. Collectively, these shall here and after be referenced as a plan. Approval of this plan and issuance of the formal agreement lettered by the Wild Harbor Estates Homeowners Association Trust is contingent on the following being met. One, as shown in the plan, there is an encroachment of a wall and patio onto the abutting trust property labeled Parkland. The association requires that the encroachment be rectified. As has been discussed, an acceptable solution would be to relocate the wall onto your property so that it runs parallel to the trust property without encroaching onto it and backfilling the void with loam. Approval is contingent on your agreement to have this work performed as part of the overall landscape work for the new garage to be completed no later than thirty days after the completion of the garage. Once you have agreed to this condition, by affixing your signature, which they have, at the conclusion of the letter and returning it, we will consider the condition having been met. And two, the association is in full support of your petition to have the town of Falmouth declare the front of your property as the primary front yard. Once declared, the association will consider the land behind your primary structure to be the rear yard. And as such, there will be no utility easement along the rear of your property. This eliminates the encroachment issue of the new garage. Once you receive confirmation, the petition is successful, we will consider that this condition has been met. Once declared, the association will consider the land behind your property structure to be your rear yard and such there will be no utility easement. I guess this is just a administrative question, can you just say there's no utility easement on the property?
I would not.
And then it just says contact with any questions. So I guess my only question with the homeowners association is, I don't think they can just get rid of the utility easement.
All right, anything else, Bob? Scott?
Just a confirmation, Bob, when you were reading through, you mentioned there was no comments from any of the Butters, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no comments from the Butters and, and the association said if they met these terms, they would be in support of petition of the front yard.
Anything else, Scott?
No.
Okay, a public comment, are there any questions, comments, or concerns from members of the public out there tonight? Back to the board.
Do we have some discussion?
Sure.
I think I understand what Bob's saying. Even if the Board of Health said that qualifies as a bedroom because of the number of square feet, we could still condition that this is only, well, we're not, this can never be a bedroom. I mean, I'm not sure.
Well, what's kind of odd is that the application is asking for it to be habitable space. But tonight, they're saying it's storage, but it's set up as habitable space. So I think we have to look at it as if it's gonna be habitable space. The, the Board of Health has always given us a comment on habitable space having to do with the septic system. And they would have to show that the septic system they have could carry the additional. But I think we may have to continue this anyways, because I don't know.
I, I guess I'd like to ask Noreen, I mean, or the rest of the board. Habitable, is that necessary, not necessarily someone's gonna be living and going to bed up there, they're gonna go up and use it? You know, so again, if, I guess the board feels we have to continue it. I'm just not sure what we get, our agenda's crowded. We can put enough conditions on this.
I guess the question is that if it meets the definition of a bedroom.
Right.
And that if these, these folks sold and somebody else moved in and said, oh, I think I'd like to have my master bedroom in there. Are they increasing their bedroom count beyond their septic capacity?
I understand.
So, you know, what might be worthwhile, albeit would be quick, would be to continue it for one meeting so that we can get confirmation from Board of Health and resolve that.
Well, it's probably, but if we put a condition on, and I know, you know, they're gonna record it in the registry of deeds. Who knows what the next person's gonna do? My gut feeling is if this comes back as a potential bedroom, this is gonna be delayed further, because then we're gonna have to go into the septic tank issue. Because it's a four-bedroom now, if this is still open, do you know what the septic tank capacity is?
Off the top of my head, I do not, I believe.
I mean, do you have something from the Board of Health that you never gave us?
Well, I guess the other comment would be, so in the Wild Harbor Association letter, they are referring to design plans by Tumi Design dated May 4, 2021. And that's what they're basing their, that's what they're basing their letter on. Do you have those plans?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Plans?
I do, yep.
Did you submit them?
I did.
We don't have those, right, in here?
Well, they're, they're included, first, first page is BSS, but behind that is.
Is that the Tumi plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're.
So we would have to refer also to the Tumi plan, because that's what they're moving there.
Well, we generally don't get involved with border disputes, I mean.
This is a border dispute, it's the, the homeowners association says they will only allow this if this, and they've signed an agreement.
I guess I'm saying, that's between them and the homeowners, not necessarily them and the board. I mean, you could say we, we could do it, even though the Board of, Board, Homeowners Board of Associations is against it. That's on them, I'm just trying to see if we can.
No, I guess what I'm saying is, the homeowners association has already signed this letter with them. So this is a current agreement that has to be met.
I guess we could just, maybe people wanna continue it, I don't think it needs to be continued considering what we have and it might take two or three weeks to get it back on. We got body B's coming. We can condition this, so it'll never be a bedroom.
Yeah, so me personally and, and the board members could do it different, I would never do this without a hearing from the Board of Health. It just doesn't make, it just, it, it just makes me leery, and I think it may comply, but our application says habitable, it meets the definition of a bedroom space, the size, the ceiling height, the windows, the heat.
Could we hold the board to see which way? I'd hate to turn this down.
I don't, I don't think we're turning it down, I mean, it's, it's an approvable project in my eyes, but I, I would feel more comfortable with the Board of Health.
Okay, that's it, you got, you got the second one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just, just so we have the, the technical.
We can continue it to a short date, I mean, it should be.
Yeah.
Should be able to get a quick enough turnaround from the Board of Health.
And I think in the meantime, if it, probably gonna come back to the bedroom, check out the septic tank capacity.
Because we'll also have then to, the Conservation just closed the hearing. We'll have their, any of their issues regarding the notice of intent. Whatever their restrictions are, because they're the ones that are gonna be handling the erosion settlement controls, then we can just write that in at the same time.
All right, should be quick and easy enough, knock on wood, let's hope.
Yeah, but you may also wanna, you may wanna get your septic plan into the file, because I'm just looking at note seven here. It's a septic system was drawn as our interpretation of installer's sketch and has not been verified. So, it's an important piece of information the board needs.
I'll add the septic plan.
Good catch, James.
I'll move to continue.
Yeah, I just, just one quick, one quick question too. So on the utility easement, is that, do you know, is that association or is that actually part from the utility companies?
I can actually speak to that.
It's open. We have a closing. How much are you charging by it?
No, this is pro bono, for the record, Kevin Clower. I only can speak to this because I just recently dealt with the homeowners association. The Wild Harbor Estates has a provision in their agreement that says effectively that there was a ten-foot utility easement along a side yard line. However, if their side yard line changes because it's now designated as the rear yard.
Let's move it.
It's now, that's where the utility easement now is located, so.
Thank you for the clarification, Attorney Clower.
These are all private covenants that we probably shouldn't be even getting involved in, though, Mr. Clower, thank you.
Yeah, and I wouldn't.
That's where I wanna go with this discussion, but thank you for the clarification.
I agree with you.
I would have never gotten involved, but they submitted a contract that's signed, so into the file.
Well, I, I move to continue, we can, you will get a second, I'm sorry.
To what date?
Leave it up to Noreen.
Do you think October 7th's gonna give enough time for conservation?
Yeah, it was a week, it was just an intent, right, it shouldn't be that.
Yeah, I guess we could just do that. It should be quick.
It's just an NOI, and have they already?
They hope.
They, they just made the decision last night, so.
Oh, okay.
If they don't have the full thing in, they could just send us.
Can at least make that as a finding.
Any restrictions that they want us to put in.
That's fine, so you want to do October 7?
All right.
That's a good day for the applicant.
So October 7th, good for you?
Yep, that's fine.
All right, Jerry, you wanna make that motion?
I make a motion, we continue to October 7th.
Second.
All right, motion to continue to October 7th made by Jerry, second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you for your time tonight, and we'll see you back here October 7th.
See you in a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next, onto our new hearings, we have application 63-21, Modalewski, 82 Hudson Street in Falmouth requesting a special permit to allow a pool exceeding twenty percent lot coverage by structures.
So, application number 63-21, John and Linda Modalewski, 82 Hudson Street, Falmouth, Mass. Has applied to zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-69E of the Code of Falmouth to allow a pool exceeding twenty percent lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 82 Hudson Street, Falmouth, Mass. From engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Hudson Street is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project is not directing any stormwater runoff to public property Butters or public rights of way. A dry well is proposed for the increase in impervious surface on the lot. From CONCOM, the project does not appear to be located within conservation jurisdiction. Assessors have no comment. Water Department, the water service in Maine must be shown the plans, if not, they're already. There isn't existing one-inch service tied into a six-inch main in Hudson Street. If the service is renewed or upgraded in the future, the meter must be moved inside the home, if not already there. Planning Board is no comment. Fire Department has no issues with the project as drawn. We have a letter, two letters of support. One is from Tim and Elena Orkut. Good evening, we are ready to express our support for the pool installation project to take place at 82 Hudson Street. We have lived at 77 Hudson Street, are close to ten years, and we have been very pleased with the improvements John and Linda Modalewski have made to their property. We have no concerns and no reservations about the Modalewskis installing a pool on their primary property. And they have our complete support for this to occur. If you or anyone in the town of Falmouth need to contact us with additional questions, please feel free to do so. And then also, this is from Michelle and Chris Bernard, 86 Hudson Street. My wife and I are direct neighbors at 86 Hudson Street to Linda and John Modalewski and would like to express our support for their swimming pool project. We attest that we have no objection to twenty percent lot coverage variance they are seeking and in our opinion would not be detrimental to the neighborhood in any way. And there is a lot comparison worksheet that was submitted. And that's it.
All right, and we're appointing both Scott and Jerry as voting members on this, so there's a full complement to the board. And Attorney Clower?
Welcome, good evening, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Ahmed Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth. And I represent the applicants, John and Linda Modalewski, the owners of 82 Hudson Street. Mr. Modalewski is here with us this evening. This property is located in what I would call the northern edge of Falmouth Heights. It's on a lot of 12,200 square feet and it's located in the residential C zoning district. Presently, there's a four-bedroom dwelling with a footprint of just over 2,400 square feet. This property is non-conforming only to the side yard setback to the north. It's eight-point-three where ten is required, otherwise it's conforming to front yard and rear yard setbacks as well as lot coverage requirements currently by structure, it's nineteen-point-eight-seven. And by structures, paving, and parking, it's twenty-eight-point-three-nine percent. The applicants have owned this home for about four years and like many others over the past year or two, have determined that they wanted to add a pool to their yard. The proposed pool would result in lot coverage by structure of twenty-four-point-eight-nine percent. So we're here tonight seeking a special permit under section 240-69E. Under that section, lot coverage by structure of up to twenty-five percent may be allowed by special permit by this board. And you're asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effects of shadow on adjacent properties, the impact on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. The, this application has a somewhat unique trigger. The trigger for this lot coverage requirement is a pool, which while it is a structure, is not really a structure as envisioned by the section of the bylaw. The dwelling itself is by right, the pool is the only aspect that's relevant to the permit. So the addition of the pool has no impact on views and vistas. It has no impact on the size and height of the dwelling in comparison with the neighborhood and no impact on the nitrogen and coastal abeyments. There's no effect of shadow by the pool. It will not, in and of itself, have any impact on the neighborhood, other than perhaps the neighbors coming over to use it. We did prepare a comparison spreadsheet of the surrounding properties. There are a number of similar footprints and lot coverage by structure percentages within those, within that area. The applicant's proposal is not substantially more detrimental than what presently exists. It will not cause any adverse effects or any new non-conformity. There's no impairment of the public view of vista and it meets the standards of 240-216. I believe that the board can and should grant a special permit for this under 240-69E. And I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Great, thank you, Attorney Clower, turn it over to board questions. Scott, anything?
No, I drove by the site today, it seems like it's a good utilization of the, the lot.
Sounds good, Bob?
I know that's currently fully fenced, correct?
It appears to be, yes.
That's the only question I have, thanks.
All right, James?
Do you know the approximate dimensions of the pool equipment?
If I had to guess, that's probably about a four-by-four.
Was that included in the calculations?
Yes.
Just to follow up, when you said, you meant the pool is fully, the, the pool is fully enclosed.
Uh, yes, yes, exactly, the gate, the gate runs to the front of the house. The fence runs to the front of the house, as shown in the plan. If you, if you look.
I'm misreading this.
If you look right at it, it's a fence coming, returning back to us.
So the whole, okay, so the gate is.
Whole backyard is enclosed.
I guess it's up to the plumbing or the, someone else that permits the pool.
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll of course meet with any building permit requirements for, for safety on the pool.
Anything else, Jerry?
No, that's it.
All right, and my concerns were already addressed through James, I was zeroing in on that pool equipment there. Any members of the public have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? All right, seeing none, back to the board.
So motion to close?
Second.
Motion to close by Bob, second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken.
So motion to approve our conditions?
Second.
Thank you, Bob, and second by James. Findings?
Our property is just adding a pool structure, it's not gonna change the non-conforming setback to the house itself. Property is fully fenced. The lot coverage will be raised from nineteen-point-eight percent to twenty-four-point-eight-nine percent, which is just under the twenty-five allowed by special permit. Meets 240-69E, 240-216, not substantially more detrimental. There were two letters of support from neighbors for the project. And no letters in opposition.
Project's not creating any new additional non-conformities. Although not noted in the plan, applicant's testimony was that the pool equipment was included in the lot coverage calculations.
And lot cover's calculations were provided.
Yep. Project's keeping would be changing nature of Hudson Street.
Yeah.
Certainly not the Hudson Street I grew up on, but it is in keeping what's there.
Very good, anything else for findings?
No.
Conditions?
So per plans, they would have to meet all the, how do you usually write it, Noreen, the Health Department and the Building Department regarding pool regulations? To include an audible lock on the gates?
Uh, yeah, it's usually the Building Department will check that.
So make it subject to that in the, again, must be fully fenced per Building Department, I think this will comply and must have audible locks. Uh, construction hours, the normal ones that we do.
I guess they comply with any, I think it might be DPW regulations requiring.
Well, there is really, there's no real.
Well, there's, I think, a while back, there was issues with people flooding the streets. The Building Department should know about this, but you may wanna check out for your client. De-watering of the pool may.
Don't flood the streets.
So that's just, that's just a town bylaw when you drain the pool?
Well, it's the same as an audible bylaw for a fence, you know, by law is a bylaw.
You may want to consider adding in that you can't install a shed, because I think the problem-
The overall coverage, yeah.
That the town is experiencing is that people will call and say, can I install a shed? And if it's under the square footage that the town requires a building permit for, they'll just tell you what your setbacks need to be.
And they don't tell them anything else.
And they would exceed, likely exceed the maximum lot coverage.
All right, so just, so if we can put that subject to, no addition of, of a shed or anything that would increase the lot coverage over twenty-five, over the percentage allowed, which is twenty-four point eight nine.
Back that up with a finding regarding the lot coverage, too. I know we mentioned the lot. All right, anything else for conditions?
That's it.
Awesome. All right, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and seconded by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Attorney Clower.
Thank you very much. You're stuck with me for three more hearings, so I'm not going anywhere.
How exciting.
See you next summer.
I'm ready to, I'm ready to, I'm cooked with gas right now, so let's go. We'll get you out of here early.
I'm counting on it.
All right, up next, we have application sixty-four dash twenty-one, Cypec Investments LLC, sixteen Worcester Ave. in Falmouth requesting a special permit to construct in addition to the nonconforming single-family dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structures.
So, application number sixty-four dash twenty-one, Cypec Investments LLC, four oh five Trontree Avenue Northwest, New Philadelphia, Ohio, applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C and two forty dash sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to construct in addition to the nonconforming single-family dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structures on subject property known as sixteen Worcester Ave., Falmouth, Mass. Okay, so there's an updated comment on engineering. They've reviewed the August twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one revised sixteen Worcester Ave. plan, which was attached. A dry well is shown on the plan for the new roof area, as was recommended. Inadequate erosion and sediment controls were added to the plans. We requested the condition be included in any approval. Conservation commission voted a negative determination approving the above referenced project. The plan and permit was attached. Additionally, from engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Worcester Ave. and Ian Nantucket Ave. are public rights of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. The plans show a flagstone walk-in hedge in the town right-of-way, which may require a license from the select board. We refer to the zoning board of appeals. It needs to be determined in any approvals. Three, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town departments. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or public rights of way. We recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells, but that's already been handled. Number six was the updated one. It had to do with, it's a small site. The proposed work is close to the town right-of-way, and the street opening permit is not required, but we would require erosion controls. We requested erosion sediment controls are included for this project to protect the town's downstream stormwater system and the public right-of-way. And that was updated in their last revision. Water department, the water service in main must be shown on the plans, if not there already. There is an existing three-quarter inch service tied into a four-inch main in Nantucket Ave. The existing service will have to be upgraded to a one-inch if the water demand is to increase due to the proposed work. If the service is upgraded, the water meter must be installed in the home, if not there already. Fire department has no issues with the project is drawn. Health does not have any issues with the project. The home is served by a four-bedroom septic system, and the project does not increase the bedroom count above four. Planning has no comment. They did do a cost breakdown worksheet regarding FEMA, showing that it falls within range. And no additional letters submitted from butters. There was a previous decision of the Falmouth zoning report of appeals on the property September seventh, it looks like two thousand and five.
Thank you, Bob, and I'll be appointing Scott and Jerry, so there's all five of us voting. And Attorney Clower, once again.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Again, for the record, my name's Kevin Clower. I am here tonight representing Cypec Investments LLC, the owner of sixteen Worcester Ave. I am joined tonight by John Cypec, who's the manager of the LLC and really the owner of the house. He, we are here tonight seeking permission to alter the existing nonconforming dwelling on this site. Sixteen Worcester Ave. is really in the heart of Falmouth Heights. It's a very dense, vibrant, and at this area largely seasonal neighborhood. This lot is twelve thousand two hundred and fifty-three square feet. It is located in the residential C zoning district, and the entirety of the lot is within an AE thirteen flood zone. Presently, there's a four-bedroom, two-story dwelling with a footprint of just shy of twenty-nine hundred square feet. It's nonconforming to front yard setback being six point six feet, where twenty-five is required, and it's nonconforming to lot coverage by structure being twenty-three point four seven percent, where twenty percent is allowed by right, and up to twenty-five percent by special permit. Mr. Cypec is here tonight requesting permission to make a modest change to the structure. It's in addition to the northern side of the home to better utilize the existing layout and, and dimensions of the house. The current footprint of the house is somewhat choppy, which is the result of a number of additions over the past hundred years. The proposed changes will not increase the number of bedrooms. It will remain at four. The existing ridge height of twenty-four feet eleven inches will remain unchanged, and the footprint will expand slightly, approximately one hundred and sixty-nine square feet, resulting in lot coverage by structure of twenty-four point eight-five percent, which necessitates a special permit under both two forty-three C and two forty sixty-nine E. There's no change to the nonconforming front yard setback, and the lot coverage by structure, though increased, is effectively eliminated as a nonconformity with the issuance of a special permit under sixty-nine E. No new nonconformity will be created. The addition will allow for the creation of a master bedroom on the first floor and an expansion of an existing bedroom on the second floor. One of the smaller existing bedrooms on that second floor will be converted into an office, and a four-foot cased opening will be installed in order to comply with Title V standards. As was noted, this is not a substantial improvement as defined by FEMA regulations. The project is actually less than twenty-five percent of the town's assessed value, and that's the town's assessed value. That was without receiving a private appraisal, which typically comes in higher. So, under two forty-three C, pre-existing nonconforming structures may be altered by special permit, provided that they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The bylaw goes on to state that the board should consider the standards of two forty-two sixteen, and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities impairs views and vistas and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new nonconformity created. The existing nonconforming setback is unaffected, and the nonconforming lot coverage by structure is effectively eliminated with the issuance of that special permit. Many of the other requirements I'm going to discuss are the same as those set forth in sixty-nine E. Two forty sixty-nine E allows for lot coverage exceeding twenty percent by special permit, and again, the board's asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, impacts on views and vistas in public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. This application has no impact to the views and vistas from public ways. It's effectively just an infill of an existing footprint. There's no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. The same number of bedrooms will exist as at present. There's no change to the effect of shadow. The ridge height remains the same. And again, the applicants are effectively filling in a gap in their, their existing footprint. And as to the size and height, we did submit that lot comparison worksheet for the nearby properties. As you all know, the Heights is a very dense neighborhood, and many of the properties there exceed lot coverage requirements. Of the forty nearby properties within a three-hundred-foot radius, twenty-eight have lot coverage above twenty, twenty percent, and twenty-one have lot coverage above twenty-five percent. This proposal of twenty-four point eight-five percent is almost exactly within the median of the nearby homes. It's very similar to those homes in footprint and in gross building area as well. The applicant's proposal represents for them a significant improvement over the existing layout of the house. It will allow for first-floor living if they choose to do so. It will not increase any existing nonconformities, won't create any new nonconformities, and has the benefit of eliminating the, the, the nonconforming lot coverage by structure. There's no adverse effects which overbalance the benefits we've discussed. It is in character with the neighborhood and surrounding homes in size and in scope, and it meets the standards of two forty-three C, two forty sixty-nine E, and two forty-two sixteen. Again, I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have at this time, but I believe that the board can grant the special permit.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. More questions? Jerry?
This might have been the one. If not, it might be the next one. I don't think the FEMA cost thing was signed by the-
We, we submitted a revised one.
Oh, you did, okay.
It's in the file.
No, the one I saw, there was no signature on it.
Yeah, we submitted a signed copy last week, Friday, I think.
If it's there, it's there.
All right, James?
You're on septic, not sewer here?
Septic. Yeah, it cuts off a little before it gets down this far.
Anything else, James?
No additional height to the-
Remains twenty-four feet eleven inches.
Thank you.
All right, Bob?
I have no questions.
Scott?
No questions.
All right, my concern was already addressed. So, members of the public have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Mrs. Cypec, you're, you're in support, right?
Yes.
All right.
Where is New Philadelphia, Ohio? That's what I, I went to the College of Worcester. I'm going, I know New Philadelphia, I just couldn't, please, thank you, sir.
Came here just for that, so don't let them down.
Back to the board.
Motion to close.
Second.
All right, motion closed made by James, seconded by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken.
Motion to approve with conditions?
Second.
All right, motion approved with conditions made by Bob, seconded by James. Findings?
Two forty dash three C, two forty dash sixty-nine E, two forty dash two sixteen, not substantially more detrimental. It's in an AE thirteen flood zone. They submitted a FEMA worksheet showing that the work is less than fifty percent. It will be allowed, and it's signed in in the file. The front yard setback is a nonconformity, six, six feet six inches, where twenty-five is required. Their current lot coverage by structure is twenty-three point four seven. They're asking for an increase to twenty-four point eight-five, which is under the twenty-five percent allowed by special permit. Home is a four-bedroom, remaining a four. It is not under town sewer system. It's on a private septic. They've updated the plan to show erosion sediment controls and dry wells. The current flagstone walk-in hedge are located within the town road layout, and engineering has suggested a license from the selectman. Lot comparison worksheet was submitted and shows that it is in the median range for the neighborhood.
So, it enhances the utilization of the residents for the homeowner?
Yeah, meets, so, so just put meets all standards of two forty-two sixteen.
Anything else for findings?
Nothing.
All right, conditions?
Per plans, condition on the erosion and sediment controls and the dry wells that are on the plans. Work hours, we normally put in there. They should seek a, a license from the selectman for the walkway and hedges on the town road layout. If they can't get one, they would need to relocate.
Do you want to just condition it that they apply for it as part of the building?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, conditions they apply for as part of the permit.
Anything else for conditions?
Did water service?
Yeah, just write in the ones with, from the water department, and they're going to have the as-ifs. Like, if, if service isn't in-house, it has to be in-house. If, they do, but they do have to upgrade the line.
Anything else for conditions?
No, but put in, put in the findings that the existing ridge height of fifteen, fifteen feet eight inches won't be increased.
I think it's twenty-four eleven.
Different file. Are you writing after our file?
Yeah.
I thought, I thought it cut off was small. All of a sudden, I thought it was over twenty-four. So, yeah, so I actually think it's twenty-six eleven, according to the plan.
All right, anything else?
And they also subject to not adding a shed without-
Yeah, we'll have to do the same. We should do them on all of them now. Were they that close with the-
So, I think the problem with the building department is that they get general questions from the public, and they're not looking at the details, so just-
We should probably add those to all of them now, where they're, when they're so close to twenty-five percent.
All right, no shed.
And actually put that into findings also. They're, they're just under the twenty-five percent, so that adding a, that a structure would-
All right, last call for any other conditions. So, that was a motion to continue, I'm sorry, a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and seconded by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, yeah.
You have an idea.
All right, I think you got condition.
What is this, this shed?
It's one hundred square feet. Is that ten by ten?
Now, it's two. Maybe, maybe two now. They, I think they have to.
I'll set, Bob. All right, so up next, we have application sixty-seven dash twenty-one, Thorogood, three fifteen Acapescot Road in East Falmouth requesting a special permit to construct in addition to the nonconforming single-family dwelling.
So, application number sixty-seven dash twenty-one, George E. and Patricia M. Thorogood, ninety-five Settlers Past, Settlers Path, Lancaster, Mass. has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C of the Code of Falmouth to construct in addition to the nonconforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as three, three fifteen Acapescot Road, East Falmouth, Mass. From CONCOM, the above referenced project appears located outside CONCOM jurisdiction. Engineering department, the application was reviewed to impact the public rights of way and public utilities. Acapescot Road is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Any connection or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project does not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or public rights of way. We recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells for stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area at minimum. From water department, the water main and service must be shown on the plans. The existing home is fed by a twelve-inch main with a three-quarter inch service. The service will have to be upgraded to a one-inch due to the proposed additional plumbing feature, plumbing fixtures proposed. Planning, no comment. That is it. We did receive something of fire department, but it was too late, but it said that they didn't have a problem. Even though it looks very secret and low-key.
So, that's it? Very quick? All right, so Scott, again, once again, Scott and Jerry being appointed as voting members, so there's five of us, and Attorney Clower, once again.
Good evening again. For the record, Kevin Clower. I'm here tonight representing George and Patricia Thorogood, the owners of three fifteen Acapescot Road. Just burst everyone's bubble. It's not that George Thorogood. I did ask. He gets that a lot, apparently. This property at three fifteen Acapescot is located on the landward side of Acapescot Road, approximately at the midpoint between Route twenty-eight and Minot Road. It's on a lot of ten thousand four hundred square feet, and it is in the residential B zoning district. It is not in a flood zone despite the proximity to Green Pond. Presently, there's a two-bedroom, single-family dwelling and shed on this site with a total footprint of just under fourteen hundred square feet. The lot coverage by structures is thirteen point three percent, as it exists today. The only nonconforming aspect of this is the front yard setback, which is twenty-one point five feet, where twenty-five is required. It's otherwise conforming with setback and lot- that they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists, and in consideration of that, you're asked to look at whether or not it creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views or vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, we have no new nonconformity being created. The only existing nonconforming setback is entirely unaffected. The addition is entirely conforming with setback and lot coverage requirements. The resulting lot coverage by structures, 16.7 percent. The resulting lot coverage by structures, paving and parking, is 21.8, both below the 20 and 40 percent that are allowed respectively for those, for those requirements. The existing ridge height of 15 feet, eight inches is not increased. The ridge height of the addition is slightly lower at 13 feet, 11 inches. Again, no change in the number of bedrooms, no impacts to views and vistas as it is in a similar style in size as the existing structure, nor remain in line with nearby homes. If this lot was slightly larger, if this lot was 20,000 square feet, I don't believe that this project would actually require a special permit, but because it's under 20,000 square feet and adding habitable space, it does. This project, as proposed, is an improvement to the utility and design of the dwelling for the applicants. There are no adverse effects, and certainly none that would overbalance the beneficial effects. It meets the requirements of 243C and 24216, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
Thank you Attorney Clower. Board questions? Scott, anything?
No, I drove by the site today. It seems to make sense for the homeowner to do this modification.
Great. Bob?
No questions.
James?
It looks like a nice project. One eye, well, idle curiosity question, the cart path. Is this one of some abandoned ancient way that's-
Probably.
Okay.
Probably, and once it's there, it doesn't come off the plan.
No, I, I just haven't seen that over here. Used to see it elsewhere on other ones. Thank you.
Well, there's lots of them.
Jerry?
No questions.
James and I are on the same wavelength tonight. I was just gonna ask about the car path, out of curiosity.
That stems from the original land court plan for, for this entire area, and it just kind of runs parallel to Acapescot Road for most of the road.
Interesting. All right, public comment, any questions, comments, concerns? Richard, anything? All right, back to the board.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion closed made by James, second by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
House is unanimously, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
All right, motion approved with conditions made by Bob, second by James. Findings?
240-3C, all standards of 240-216, not substantially more detrimental. Front yard setback is 21 feet, five inches where 25 is required, that's the nonconformity for the site. Current lot coverage by structure is 13.3 percent. That is going to be increasing to 16.7 percent, which is well under, well the 25, actually well under the 20 percent that's allowed by, right?
Allowed by, yeah.
The ridge height of the addition will not be higher than the current property. In fact, it will be lower at 13 feet, 11 inches. Current home is a two-bedroom, it will be remaining a two-bedroom. Our comments from Water Department is that they must do a service upgrade to a 1-inch service. That main must also be shown on the plans. In the current plan, I have, doesn't appear to show drywells, so we can have them upgraded to drywells.
Anything else for findings?
No, I think it's pretty, keep them all like that. Rollin'. I like this. You should forget, you should only take small projects on, you should take smaller-
We get through five hearings in an hour.
How about conditions then?
I'll say, so per plans, I'd have to upgrade the plans for, to show the water service and the drywells. Do the upgrade, the upgrade for the water service to a 1-inch, which is being required by the Water Department. Construction hours. All vehicles in construction are going to be kept on site, they should be easy enough.
All right, anything else for conditions? Seeing none, that was a motion approved made by Bob and second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
House is unanimously. Thank you Attorney Clower for that application.
I thought I had lost Avenue A.
All right, up next we have application 70-21, Remia, 11 Avenue A, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct additions and a covered front porch exceeding 20 percent lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 11 Avenue A, East Falmouth, Mass.
We did receive an RDA from Conservation. From the Health Department, the plan shows four bedrooms and a bonus room that will also be considered a bedroom for a total of five bedrooms. The home is served by a six-bedroom septic system. Another hidden fire department referral. First time I've seen those. Again, regarding the Conservation RDA, they voted to approve the work through negative determination. They did attach the plan. From Engineering, the application was reviewed to impacts for public rights of way and public utilities. Avenue A is a private right of way in this area. Any connections to alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project does not direct any stormwater runoff to public property but as a public rights of way. Drywells are proposed for the roof areas. Erosion sediment controls are proposed around the limit of work to protect the abutting properties. Planning board has no comment. Water Department has no comment. Assessors has no comment. And no, no lettuce or butter at all.
All right, and for the last time tonight, Scott and Jerry being appointed, so there'll be a full five of us voting, and Attorney Clower?
Good evening again. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower, and I'm here tonight representing Leonard Remia, the owner of 11 Avenue A. We're here tonight to seek permission for the renovation in addition to the existing dwelling, which will result in lot coverage by structure exceeding 20 percent. 11 Avenue A is located south of Minot Road. It's between Green Pond and Bourne's Pond. It's really a lovely, well-established, kind of beachside residential neighborhood. This lot is 18,786 square feet. It is in a residential B zoning district, and it is entirely within the AE13 flood zone. Existing at the house today is a five-bedroom, one-and-a-half-story dwelling with an attached two-story garage and a pool. The total footprint here is 3,367 square feet. That's lot coverage by structure of 17.9 percent as it exists. The existing ridge height of the main portion of the house is 25 feet, one-and-a-half inches, and the ridge height of the existing garage is 27 feet, four-and-a-half inches. The dwelling and the structures, the house, the garage, and the pool are all entirely conforming to setback and lot coverage requirements. This is the applicant's full-time residence, he's a local surgeon, and he's owned this property for a little over four years, and he's been making pretty significant improvements to that property since that purchase, including a new six-bedroom septic system, the addition of the mudroom and the garage, and the in-ground pool. Now, he's seeking permission to renovate and create an addition to the front portion of the dwelling to improve the primary living area of the home. This will result in one of the bedrooms being relocated to the second floor. There'll be a total of four bedrooms on the second floor of the main portion of the house. The living space in the kitchen area on the first floor will be expanded. The existing sunroom will be incorporated into the dwelling. There is an area above the garage, which is a bonus room, which does qualify as a bedroom under the Title V requirements or regulations. The total number of bedrooms will remain at five, which is less than what's permitted with the six-bedroom septic system. The ridge height of the main portion of the house will remain at 25 feet, one-and-a-half inches, which is a little under, a little over two feet lower than the garage ridge height. This proposal does not result in any new nonconformities, but the lot coverage by structure does increase to 23.5 percent, which is allowable, though requires a special permit from this board under 24069E. Again, at the risk of repeating myself, in residential B zoning districts, lot coverage by structure above 20 percent is allowed by special permit. The board is asked to consider as factors in this, the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effect of shadow, the impact on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. Here, there is no impact of views and vistas from public ways. Avenue A is a private way, it's a short, somewhat secluded street. A lot comparison worksheet was submitted. The dwelling will remain in line with the surrounding properties. Though the building is larger, the ridge height does not increase, and it's in an area with many similarly large homes. The layout of this house, and actually the layout of the nearby homes, I think lends itself in a way that there's not going to be a negative impact of shadow. And there is no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. Again, as we discussed, the septic system is designed for more beds than what is being proposed. It is important to note that this proposal is not a substantial improvement either. Under the FEMA regulations, the cost is less than 50 percent of the assessed value of the structure, and again, that's the town's assessed valuation. These proposed alterations are a very significant improvement for the applicant's use. It really opens up that living area on the first floor. It won't create any new dimensional nonconformities. I think it's interesting to note that but for the pool, the lot coverage by structure on site is below 20 percent, it would be 19.2 percent. If that was the case, the application doesn't require a special permit, as it otherwise complies with all aspects of the bylaw. This proposal will result in an attractive, useful dwelling, which will be in character with the neighborhood and the surrounding homes. There's no adverse effects that overbalance, overbalance the beneficial effects we've discussed, and I believe it meets the requirements of 24069E and 24216. Based on this information, I would ask that the board grant the special permit, and I'd of course be glad to address any questions that you might have at this time.
All right, thank you Attorney Clower. Board questions? Jerry, anything?
No questions.
No questions.
Bob?
No questions.
Scott?
I'll keep you going, no questions.
I didn't have any questions either. All right.
No one's even playing tonight.
What's that?
No one's even playing tonight that we can rush home to watch.
All right, public comment? Richard, anything? All right, back to the board.
Motion to close.
Second.
All right, motion closed made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved with conditions.
Approved with conditions made by Bob and second by James. Findings?
240-69E, 240-216, not substantially more detrimental. Property currently has a dwelling and a pool. It's in the AE13 flood zone. It's currently a five-bedroom dwelling. Lot coverage by structures will be increasing to 23.5 percent, under the 25 percent allowed by special permit. Property has a six-bedroom septic system, which would allow the bedroom definition of the bonus room over the garage. FEMA worksheet was submitted, showing it meets 50 percent rule. Also, lot coverage calculations were submitted.
Anything else? I don't have anything. Conditions?
Per plans, plans must match the plans that were with the Conservation RDA rule. Subject to any restrictions with Conservation.
All right, anything else?
Work hours.
Okay, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved with conditions.
Aye.
House is unanimously. Thank you Attorney Clower for that application.
I thought I had lost Avenue A.
All right, up next, that does it for our public hearings. Moving on to our open meeting items, we have voting the minutes from July 29th, August 5th, and August 19th.
Tabling the 19th, but the other two are ready to vote.
All right, tabling the 19th, and just to get an accurate vote, I know Scott hasn't been with us yet. Jerry, when, when did you start participating?
After.
I gave you the-
After the 29th.
Yeah, it was after, right?
Can we, I should put that up?
I can look that up as well, but you know.
Yeah, no, I don't, but I don't think you were on those hearings, so.
Oh, no, yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so it would just be the three of us voting anyway?
Yeah, I don't think you need a quorum to vote minutes.
All right, so then I would make motion to approve the minutes of July 19th, 2021.
All right, motion was made by Bob, James is the second.
Was it the 19th or the 29th?
July 19th.
I have July 29th on the-
Yeah, it's 29, I'm sorry.
July 29th.
We also can do August 5th. Are you tabling just the 19th?
Ah, yes.
So we'll approve July 29th and August 5th.
I'll second the motion.
All right, motion approved with minutes made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved with conditions.
Second.
Approved with conditions made by Bob and second by James. Findings?
240-69E, 240-216, not substantially more detrimental. Property currently has a dwelling and a pool. It's in the AE13 flood zone. It's currently a five-bedroom dwelling. Lot coverage by structures will be increasing to 23.5 percent, under the 25 percent allowed by special permit. Property has a six-bedroom septic system, which would allow the bedroom definition of the bonus room over the garage. FEMA worksheet was submitted, showing it meets 50 percent rule. Also, lot coverage calculations were submitted.
Anything else? I don't have anything. Conditions?
Per plans, plans must match the plans that were with the Conservation RDA rule. Subject to any restrictions with Conservation.
All right, anything else?
Work hours.
Okay, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. House is unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. I should have mentioned this during public comment, if I could just say something for one second.
Go ahead.
With the lot coverage calculation worksheets, and this is something I'll be happy to discuss with Norah and Ashley, the assessors no longer have a tab by which it's relatively easy to determine footprint and, and size. So, you know, I'm not sure what the best way to determine footprint and gross building area for buildings is anymore, which is the reason part of my lot coverage calculation worksheet here was blank. I've started going through each and every of the surrounding properties and, and trying to calculate it based on, on, you know, whether or not there's a quarter, you know, a three-quarter story or a half-story above, and, and, you know, some, much more math than I'm comfortable doing. But I'm not sure how we want to approach that moving forward, and just in a way that it's, it's somewhat uniform, just something I've been thinking about with a number of applications.
As to my knowledge, we've had this discussion to no avail, and that there's no uniform way of doing it. You can hire a consultant to go out with it, measure the heights and things like that. I think a lot of people and predecessors relied on those. Well, maybe we're getting off topic, but this might be something for the Saturday afternoon.
Yeah, it's, it's something that the board's brought up before, and I was unaware of those issues with the assessors department, but we were looking at perhaps taking a second look at full calculations and trying to streamline it and make it more-
I just think, I just think it's a matter of making sure that we're comparing apples and apples.
Exactly.
Right, exactly.
All right.
Well, that's my, that's my spiel for the evening. Thank you all very much, I appreciate your time. Mr. Peterson, very lovely to meet you, look forward to seeing you, and everyone have a great night.
You too, Attorney Clower, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, up next, that does it for our public hearings. Moving on to our open meeting items, we have voting the minutes from July 29th, August 5th, and August 19th.
Tabling the 19th, but the other two are ready to vote.
All right, tabling the 19th, and just to get an accurate vote, I know Scott hasn't been with us yet. Jerry, when, when did you start participating?
After.
I gave you the-
After the 29th.
Yeah, it was, it was after, right?
Can, can we, I should put that up?
I can, I can look that up as well, but you know.
Tabling the 19th, but the other two are ready to vote.
All right. Tabling the 19th and... Just to get an accurate vote, I know Scott hasn't been with us yet. Jerry, when did you start participating?
After.
I gave you the...
After the 29th.
Yeah, it was after, right?
Can we...
I can look at that as well, but you know.
Yeah. No, I don't, but I don't think you were on those hearings, so...
Oh, no, yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah. So it would just be the three of us voting anyway?
Yeah, I don't think you need a quorum to vote minutes.
All right, so then I would make motion to approve the minutes of July 19th, 2021.
All right. Motion was made by Bob. James, is there a second?
The 19th or the 29th?
July 19th.
I have July 29th on the...
Yeah, it's 29th, I'm sorry.
July 29th.
We also can do August 5th. Are you tabling just the 19th?
Ah, yes.
So we'll approve July 29th and August 5th.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Motion approved the minutes made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. And tabling the 19th. Board updates. Anything?
Recodification is coming up again.
It's not that we're making any, to be honest, not a lot of headway.
Lot of pages to go over, isn't it?
Slowly but surely, right?
Part of that, I guess, is the future. Do we intend to make any recommendations on codification of the thing we were briefed tonight?
As far as recodification goes, I think it's too early in the process for we to be offering any...
But we may...
Maybe you could say we endorse it or we don't endorse it, if the board wanted to have that discussion.
Right, right. Progress needs to be made on it in order for us to get to that point.
Did you read the 175 pages they came up with?
So the codification's gotten very complicated, because originally, we were thinking it was just going to be a matter of semantics and cleanup and organization. It has changed.
In which way?
They have changed wordings here and there and some other things, but not gone into enough of some of the things that we need changes on, so...
Right. Well, so the recodification is essentially supposed to be a cleanup with deferral to changes later. That being said, there were some things that didn't match current state, so they did adjust that information.
Yeah, adjusted state law. I think they had some charts that cross-reference. I don't think, and I hadn't followed it as closely since I left, I mean, I don't know if it's going to get by town meeting, but I don't know if they strayed that far off. But the point is, are we going to take it upon ourselves to either say we recommend it, we don't? Are we going to discuss it again?
So I think the problem with doing it as a board, whether you recommend it or not, is that you would really have to go over every one of those changes that went in there. It's hard to... And you're right, it's in front of town meeting. I don't know how they're going to present to town meeting. Even under the review, it's been made clear that the planning board has jurisdiction of what they're going to suggest on, if they'll even accept everything or not. What's made it a little more complicated, and it probably won't come up in this round, but they sent out comments to local attorneys that you would, to get comments, and unfortunately, local attorneys thought it had more to do with changing all the bylaws, so most of their comments came back with changes that they wanted, which aren't in this, hopefully. But it looks like this process is going to be, it's been going on for, what, five years?
Something like that.
They also are going to need to extend the contracts, because just to do the basic changes...
It doesn't have any of the changes in...
Doesn't have any of the changes that we needed to put in there.
I guess it's just coming back, it doesn't appear, and if I had wanted to send comments, I don't have to worry vote. I can speak as individual, because we're not going to be voting.
If you didn't want to do it as the board, you can send comments to it as a town meeting representative.
No, 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 I can send it as a citizen. I can't send it if it's something that's going to come back in front of this board, even though I'm a town meeting member.
Well, they're not going to ask...
The question is simple. It's up to the chairman. Are we going to vote to review this again and make recommendations to town? If the answer is yes, I am prohibitive from doing certain things that I might otherwise have done. I cannot write to the board as a town meeting member and being on this board if it's going to come in front of this board. That's a conflict. I mean, you've already gave the reasons why we shouldn't do it. I just wanted to confirm, and maybe we'll decide next week. We could almost decide right now.
You're talking about the recodification, just one...
Yes, yeah, the recodification.
And your worry is...
My worry is I may want to make some comments on it, and I don't want to be encumbered by being a member of this board.
So from what I understand, you'd have to check with town council, that as a town meeting member versus a member of the public, you can comment as a town meeting member because we get an exemption as a town meeting member?
But that's from things in front of town meeting. This is not in front of town...
No, this is going, but it's going in front of town.
I'm asking, I don't want to belabor Frank, he's done enough things. This should be something simple enough. If we are not going to discuss it, just say, Jerry, we're not going to discuss it. I mean, it is, you know, whether we want it or we don't want it.
But your worry is...
My worry is my...
Contributing comments to the recodification group as a private citizen versus...
As a private citizen, oh, actually, I'm a board member. If it's going to come in front of this board, I'd have to recuse myself, even as a town meeting member.
I mean, in terms of the recodification, I mean, it's been taking so long, I haven't even given any thought about whether the board's going to review it as a whole and make any...
If that comes up, we won't know yet. So it's hard to say we won't know yet, but they won't know yet if anything is going to change prior to town meeting.
That's 167 pages.
I personally don't think there's a lot of big changes in, I don't know what Noreen's feel, but we're the representative. I don't see any really big changes in what's come before us now.
The biggest part of it is supposed to be to try to streamline the bylaws, so that it's easier for people to use, to find stuff, put all the definitions in one section. They're going to provide a crosswalk, so that you can compare where you found something in the old bylaw to where it's relocated in the new, because all the numbers will change. So, you know, the references that we use now, all those will change. I mean, essentially, the intent is not to make changes to the bylaw, but just to clean it up. And that's this phase, and then the future phases will be to implement changes that people have discovered over time.
I got my answer. Thank you.
As far as what was discussed tonight on this overlay district.
Okay, that's different.
The board may want to consider prior to town meeting if they have any concerns or questions chiming in.
Now that we've, now that Tom Bott was kind enough to present to us, maybe, I don't I would like it as an open meeting item to have an actual discussion on it.
Yeah.
I'm just looking forward and wondering where that might be appropriate, because we're busy.
I mean, I think one of the things...
When's town meeting? Sorry to interrupt, Jerry.
I think it's the 15th.
15th? Okay.
So you'd be looking at, your last option would be November 4th.
Yeah, but if the board were to take a position and then present, I'd want to do it sooner than that, so either the... Should we just stick it on the 21st? Is the 7th too early?
Yeah, as a board, you'd have to devote it by November 4th.
Right.
So if you wanted to discuss it before, to have a draft on November 4th, if you decide to do that.
So let's do that, then. Let's add that on as an agenda item on the 21st to discuss, and then on the 4th.
We could say discuss and vote.
Yep.
I mean, we want to tighten things up. I mean, I can guess what some people's concerns are, and that's, and I agree and not agree. In fact, if people could put their comments together, get them to Noreen, so Noreen could get them to us, so that we're not seeing a clean slate, you know, we'll know the issue of how do you appeal a building permit? I'm assuming that'd be one issue that we want to discuss, and then maybe others. That was one of the things.
Even though this is coming from the planning board, because the planning board doesn't deal in special permits and only site permits, we've had actually more experience in general from a public point of view and a hearing point of view for high-density projects. Because when we get to high-density projects, which are 40Bs, et cetera, we're the only board that basically chimes in.
Right.
So they haven't experienced the hearings with questions that we get on something high-density or appeals. For disclosure, I own property that would be in this overlay district on Main Street. There may be members of other boards that have either property or do business on that side of Main Street, but...
Or anywhere in town.
Or anywhere in town. And you're not going to get by that if you have a business, you're going to be in one of these areas. We did get a couple answers tonight. Every one of these districts board as residential neighborhoods. Residential neighborhoods are usually the neighborhoods that have problems with high-density. I'd like to get some more information, you know, maybe Noreen will know through the whole idea of appealing a building permit, because my understanding is, appealing a building permit has nothing to do with what is allowed in these districts.
And that's what Bob said tonight, I mean...
I mean, and I know they don't want to discuss it, and I know it's controversial, but I just think you have to discuss it, because if these districts are encompassing the entire downtown through Davis Straits, you know, it's one thing if you're looking at one parcel like the Plaza, which is big and can be developed, but now look at every other building on Main Street. And I don't know how the planning board looks at it, I'm sure they look at all the angles, but when I look at projects like this, and they say up to, you know, 21 units, is it 21?
It's 20.
For 20 units per acre, you have to look at every single parcel in this district, how close it is to an acre, and you have to assume you're going to get build-out. You can't assume that, well, there's only going to be three or four parcels.
I think it was, what, a 10,000 square foot minimum? So you're not even looking at...
I understand, I've never heard of it, I'm currently in business redevelopment, which allows apartments above, and that's what they wanted to do, these streetscapes.
We're having the discussion tonight.
No, it's just that I've never heard of, and I'm just not aware of it, I've never heard of no minimum setback. If you took means...
Not in this town, anyway.
No, I just, there may be somewhere. I just don't know what that means. Does that mean that every single property can build on the sidewalk?
Potentially.
I don't know if there's anything in the port, and I'd have to read it again. We get a lot of concerns regarding shadow. If you maxed out these sites to 35 feet at the 20 units per acre, you're going to have shadow issues. There's no, there's just, there's no way around it. It's just going to happen. That is going to change the look of an area.
So do you want to put some comments together for the board?
I mean, I'll put some comments down, because I'm just, I don't know how it will affect, but I do know that we live in a tourist community. I know there's a lot year-round here, but the money's made by the tourist community. I'm not sure how this high density is going to affect people coming here because they like a lower density. I know it helps the town on SHI rules and on affordable housing. I would have liked a little more details on how this is allowed with the state. I do have, they may have a process in there, but I sat on that accessory apartment committee, and the building commissioner got up in front of us very honestly and said, "I will not track these affidavits that I'm supposed to. Don't have the manpower. I cannot do it." So if we're not tracking right now the few accessory apartments we're permitted, unless they're hiring someone or changing something with the town, who is going to track hundreds of possible units? The parking he brought up, we get issues all the time with parking, and we've heard some testimony from different projects that on rentals, sometimes they don't have it, but on homeownership, it's different. And even on a lot of rental projects, even though a lot of people don't need to have a car because they're located downtown, it's something that most renters have. It's just, it's this tangible item. It, you know, it makes you feel good. You have a car, you have something if you want to go somewhere. One unit, one parking space for every unit on 20 per acre is odd to me. When we do shared parking with other properties for parking reductions, we require leases and agreements, and I like the idea of it. I just, I worry that there's, the details aren't in there, and that you're selling a vision without the details. And the reason I brought up 40Bs was because I've seen the editorials. They have really said that this is going to cut down on the number of 40B projects in town. That really is one of the ideas, that if we have affordable housing here, you won't have developers doing 40Bs. Well, the developers are doing 40Bs in where these lots are located in higher marketing areas of town. Has nothing to do with them all wanting to be located downtown.
Yeah.
It's going to get us eventually, hopefully, the town will eventually do a safe harbor, but I never understood why the town didn't buy a large parcel of property and put, you know, 100 rental units up somewhere and pretty much meet their goals.
One of the things, and I know it'd be difficult, but I think with the exception of one thing you said, I have no problems with authorizing Bob to bring up some of these points at the public hearing, because I don't want to be accused of sandbagging them like we were last time, when we asked the simple question, and later they says, "Oh, why didn't you bring it up?" If we have serious concerns, I'm assuming we might...
So maybe if I look at this...
It's more up to you if you feel comfortable. I mean, the only thing I disagreed with you, and you say they don't have the same experience. They might not have the experience with identity. They have the experience with dealing with controversy. I would leave that out.
No, I didn't mean experience that. I mean that when they have hearings with the public, they don't deal with appeals because it's site review.
That's, well, that's...
It seems that the, what this bylaw is going to allow, it just allows a much more friendly for the developer, it seems.
It is.
At the same time, I'm concerned, because what a neighbor or a butter could object to, and even, I know they're adjusting it, but they're cutting back on the number of people that have to be notified. Those would be my concerns. Noreen, are there any communities who've adopted this particular form of zoning that we're aware of? I'm curious to see what their experience might be.
I mean, the state doesn't encourage a lot of, you know, particularly downtown increased density type of things, but I guess maybe part of what the concern is that I'm hearing from you is when you have one of these types of proposals before you, and you have residential butters that come in, you do things like dark sky compliant lighting and...
Yeah, buffers, little...
Yeah, and I guess the question is...
There's a little more even playing field in the negotiation about conditions.
What happens to a butters in this circumstance that might appear? Because I suppose they would either, if they couldn't get a condition in via the planning board, I really question what an appeal of a building permit is going to provide you, because the building permit is merely plans that the building commissioner approves if they meet requirements, as opposed to, you know, the density or the whatever other issues that will be created.
Do we think...
This is still being proposed as a 40-hour project, right, Noreen?
40-hour.
So just a quick rundown of towns: Amesbury, Brockton, Grafton, Haverhill, Kingston, Lynnfield, Northampton, North Andover, Plymouth. That's just a, I don't think that's every town.
Is it? And it may not be, unless it's wish of the board. We could consensus, because I don't know if we can vote on it, suggest that they take it off town meeting floor, which they may not do, because we have serious concerns. We haven't been able to participate before, because we never had the full briefing. We got the full briefing...
Well, they have invited, they have reached out to the public. They've had public sessions where they've offered people to come and participate.
But as a board, I don't, since it might have come in front of us, it comes back down to, I know I'm a town meeting member, the board member may not be able to participate, because it could have come back in front of us, unless we don't consider that type of thing within our code of conduct. That's, it's an approval, but it's probably not the type of approval that the legislator had in mind. I mean, you know, it's a slippery slope, so it's, yes, they had it, but we couldn't talk about it, because we didn't know if it's going to come in front of us. And now we're talking it might come in front of us. So that answer is, we can't talk about it. So we either request that they take it off, because we have concerns. It's putting a lot on Bob, and maybe we shouldn't.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't, to be honest, I wouldn't waste your time and ask him to, they're not going to remove it for town meeting. That's a no-go. As far as me representing the board, I don't know if I could do that anyways. I own property there, and I may have to speak to it. I just, I've never understood the disconnect between planning and zoning. I understand zoning makes exceptions, and it's a special permit, but we're always the ones that have to go do the special permit by the bylaws that they create. And I've never understood, whenever these changes go, they are not having, asking for a meeting with the zoning board. Are there any input you could give as a board, actually meet with them to go over it? I get the impression that they don't want the comment. You know, I could be wrong, but I mean, it's really shocking that this kind of a thing that is an overlay district. It's great that the planner came tonight, and I think that's a huge plus, that he gave us some basics on the projects. This should have happened six months ago. It shouldn't have been where you can look at our website. We should be able to just have a general dialogue. Why don't you, you know, come to the meeting for the open meeting like he just did, and tell us the issues, and maybe we'll give you feedback directly.
But to that point, we invited him, right?
We did, and everything, I mean, we were invited to go, I knew TJ went when I went with Ed way back, with the presentations from Rhode Island on these design guidelines, but I think that had to do with the Form-based code.
It was the Form-based code.
So this is the first time I heard tonight that the Form-based will be later. We're going to do this first, and then we'll decide how to bring in the Form-based code. And, I don't know, I just, you know, if everything's a plus, it's great, but a lot of people don't pay attention to these items, and then it appears and it passes, and then you start having things, you know, be built, and people think, "Oh, you know, what were you thinking?" having things, you know, be built, and people think, oh, you know, what were you thinking? You know, where is, I mean, tonight, there's no, where is the oversight? And that should be a simple, if you're bringing this in front of town meeting, that should be automatic. This is who does the oversight, and this is how it's going to work. But even on my last couple of town meetings, on the other stuff that's come up, they haven't, other things haven't given any details, and people get tired, and they don't want to deal with it. They just.
Sometimes they vote it down, though. I think we probably beat, no, I'm sorry. I got my answer to the first question. The second question, I learned a lot more on, for discussion for town meeting.
I'm glad he came. I think it was a plus to have him here, and at least he gave us some answers.
Absolutely. All right. Wasn't anticipating to have that much of a discussion on it, but that's all right. Any future agenda items or anything else? All right. Meeting adjourned.